Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council meeting for Monday, June 30th. Thank you very much. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada." Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We'll move into the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Can I have a motion for that set of minutes? Councilor McLean.
Mayor Given, I move the minutes of the city council meeting held June 16, 2014, be adopted.
Thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Does it look like we've got everything in order? Looks like we do, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. We move on to the adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion for the adoption of the agenda as presented? Councilor Rice.
I move adoption of the agenda as presented.
Thanks, Councilor Rice. Any discussion or debate on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries as well, and that brings us to the delegation portion of the agenda. This is an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward on any council matter, any community-related matter for that, as a matter of fact, as long as it's not the subject of a public hearing, because we deal with the delegations for public hearings under the public hearing business. So, is there anybody that wanted to come forward to address council on any community matter? I don't see anybody in the crowd running to the front, to the podium and the table up at the front, but this is an opportunity that we have at every regular city council meeting. We make sure that there's dedicated time at the start of every meeting for community members to come forward. So, if nobody's going to come forward tonight, we will move on into those public hearings. And I would call to order the public hearing for land use bylaw amendment C-1260-12 to correct inconsistencies and errors, and I'd look for a brief introduction from administration. Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, Mayor Given. The attached amendment package is intended to address inconsistencies and errors in the land use bylaws, you indicated. The Planning and Development Services Department initiated these amendments in, I guess, small batches since council adopted the new land use bylaw last September. We did identify, and I suspect we may encounter some more in the coming months, but we've been trying to identify on a priority basis those amendments to the land use bylaw that need to be made to clarify some ambiguities and just some inconsistencies, if you like, between different sections of the bylaw. So, these amendments specifically include to Section 10 of the land use bylaw text and the definitions, to change the definition to retail store general, to remove a contradictory portion of that definition, and delete the specific mention of consignment baby items. I'll go through the list, Mayor Given, and if you have some questions about some of the fine points, I'd be happy to elaborate. The second amendment is in Section 19.9 where the words are written, "With the written consent of adjacent landowners is identified by the development officer." This is a segment of the land use bylaw that deals with notifications pursuant to discretionary uses, variances, and so on. Pardon me. So, the amendment is being proposed is to remove that statement since it's essentially incorrect when we notify adjacent property owners regarding a variance or discretionary use. We're seeking comment or input to the process, not seeking consent, and so consequently that statement was incorrect, and this amendment would fix that. Thirdly, in Section 83.4B in the residential section of the land use bylaw, standards for semi-detached dwellings, the requirements for lot width and lot area in this table should have the additional per unit inserted with them, so it's clear that these lot widths and lot area are specific to the dwelling units where they're attached, obviously. And finally, in Section 8.4, I should say, second last, in Section 84.4, regarding site stands, the per unit clause should be deleted in this instance because it refers to duplexes, which are, of course, over and under dwellings in terms of two units, but one is on the first floor and the second is in the basement, so consequently, it's a single lot requirement. And then finally, Section 104.4, 11.3, contains a typographical error. Vehicle brackets minor should read vehicle wash minor. And so consequently, the recommendation is that bylaw C-1260-12, being an amendment to the land use bylaw, be given second and third reading this evening.
Okay. Thanks very much, Mr. McIntyre. At this point, any questions for administration from council? If not, then we'll move on to the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. So, with every public hearing, this is an opportunity for anybody in the community that wanted to address this hearing specifically to come forward, so I'd ask if there's anybody who wanted to come forward in support or in favor of the proposed changes. Again, just to make sure, if there's anybody who want to come forward in favor or support of the proposed changes? I don't see anybody coming forward, and so I'll ask if there's anybody who wanted to come in opposition or to oppose the proposed changes. Again, I don't see anybody coming forward, and so, one last opportunity. Was there anybody that wanted to speak to this public hearing or the items of the changes to the bylaw? Again, I don't see anybody coming forward. Council, one last opportunity before I close the public hearing for questions for administration? And again, I don't see any, so I would close the public hearing and look for business arising, which is a motion or the recommendation. Councilor Rice.
I move second reading of bylaw C-1260-12.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. So, motion for second reading is open for discussion and debate. Any discussion or debate on these proposed changes to the land use bylaw? Don't see anybody ringing in, so I will call for the vote on second reading. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Rice, would you care to do third reading?
I move third reading of bylaw C-1260-12, an amendment to the land use bylaw to correct errors and inconsistencies.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Any discussion or debate on third reading? Seeing no council members ringing in, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. Our next item of business is also a public hearing, and that's land use bylaw amendment C-1260-10, secondary suites. I'd call this public hearing to order and ask for a brief introduction from administration. Mr. McIntyre.
Mayor Given, the background on this particular amendment package stems from concern identified both through staff experience in administering the land use bylaw and concerns that have been expressed by members of the public and council. The Community Growth Committee directed administration to undertake a... If I can just pause one second and ask for IT staff if we could use the visual support. Okay, thank you. This might help a little bit. As I said, so, Community Growth Committee gave direction to administration to look into secondary suites and how the city is dealing with them, and the advice from staff and ultimately, Community Growth Committee agreed and gave us direction was to initiate amendments to the land use bylaw regarding secondary suites as an interim measure for council to consider while going into a deeper review of the policy and the provisions for secondary suites in the city. And specifically, we will be looking at the RSRG and RT districts, and this is in the context of an interim amendment, so I think in the fullness of the discussion, council will get a better understanding of the two different parts here. So, in terms of this amendment package tonight for this public hearing, we're looking at an interim change to the land use bylaw to kind of address some of the most immediate concerns with the secondary suites, and at some point in the future, probably within the next six months, come back with a more comprehensive recommendation. So, in terms of just highlighting the quick points here, the amendments are a response to numerous concerns, as I made reference to overall site design and provision of required parking, trend towards an oversaturation of secondary suites in some neighborhoods, on-street parking congestion that stems from that oversaturation, and additionally, impacts on provisions for utilities, that is, atco electric, water and sewer, garbage collection, and postal services. The images here indicate some of the issues, both with parking conditions in neighborhoods where secondary suites have been approved in conjunction with initial development permits for singly detached dwellings, and just the extent of the land area that's being devoted to parking where developers, builders have actually been striving to, the parking necessary to meet the land use bylaw requirements for secondary suites. I think probably most members of council and members of the public have observed scenes such as this on garbage collection day, and in the winter, the problem is compounded, as I think you're also aware, with snow and snow removal. As an example of what administration are really kind of describing as oversaturation, this particular neighborhood in West Point shows that you have continuous entire blocks of the subdivision of the neighborhood that are entirely composed of singly detached dwellings with secondary suites built in. In fact, these are the equivalent of duplexes in most respects, and the subdivisions were not planned with that level of density, even though the density itself may not be dramatic in terms of an outline plan scale. The specific infrastructure and the intentions in terms of the requirements for parking were not anticipated as part of that planning exercise. And the one other footnote I will add to, I think, the degree of kind of saturation that results here is that secondary suites are traditionally viewed as something that a homeowner might add subsequent to moving into their home as a way to kind of supplement their mortgage payments or so on, so on, but in this instance, we're seeing a phenomenon where the homeowner is not actually living in the residence. It's being developed and occupied as a rental type of income property situation, and that's what we really need to look at more closely from a policy point of view. This is a relatively new trend in the market that we really didn't anticipate or envision through the planning policies. This particular image here is really intended to highlight the fact that the singly detached dwelling is actually being built with services for two full and independent units, and again, more like a duplex or a duplex-type dwelling than a secondary suite, so the scale and the intensity is much more than one would expect in terms of the intended policy. So, in terms of what would change if council goes ahead with these interim provisions is relatively simple. I will go through the points in terms of the presentation, but the main distinction is that we do allow for secondary suites in all forms of singly detached dwellings. However, in the RR, the residential restricted district, the RG, I'm sorry, and the RSR, small lot residential district... Just bear with me one moment. They are permitted as discretionary uses, and they're permitted as of right in the other zones or the other districts. I will come back to that slide in a moment. So, what is being proposed is that every residential district, secondary dwellings, be treated as discretionary uses. That is, you're not automatically entitled to get a permit for a secondary use. You actually have to satisfy the development authority that the property that the use is being proposed on actually has the capacity to accommodate the parking in a reasonable design and fashion, and that the adjacent lots and so on and housing are not going to be unduly affected or impacted by it. So, it does put significant authority on the development officer and to weigh the merits of the individual application, but it does at least allow for some more conservative treatment of discretionary uses so that until we get a more comprehensive solution in hand, we can sort of stem the tide, if you like, of, you know, overdevelopment in terms of secondary uses. In terms of the legislative responsibilities, the act requires, of course, public hearing before an amendment to the land use bylaw can be adopted by council, and advertising has been undertaken as required. In terms of financial implications, changing the permission to discretionary does require an additional fee, $300, to the applicant. And in terms of the staff implications, additional staff time will be required to process applications for secondary suites because they do have to be reviewed at a more detailed level, and because, of course, it is the development officer's responsibility to make a decision, is this an appropriate use at this location. And the additional procedure does involve advertising and advising adjacent landowners that an application has been received and they will have an opportunity to comment on it before it is approved. So, Mayor Given, based on that background, administration recommend that bylaw C-1260-10 be given second and third reading.
Okay. Thanks very much, Mr. McIntyre. Brief opportunity for questions for administration from council. Councilor Rice.
Mr. McIntyre, I had a complaint just today, as a matter of fact, where a resident has a neighbor that has two bedrooms in the basement, and they have rented each of those bedrooms to two people. Is that covered in this bylaw amendment? It's not really a suite, it's just bedrooms, but it still increases that density, or will it be looked at in the review? Because I know there's quite a bit of that in the city as well.
Mr. McIntyre?
Mayor Given...
Mr. McIntyre, just turn your microphone on and off. Otherwise, you're in the queue behind all the other council members that have questions.
Turn it off and then... Okay. Thank you. The intent of the comprehensive review is to look at every aspect of secondary suites, including this aspect that attempts to regulate by virtue of the number of individuals occupying, or the number of bedrooms, I should say. We have no authority to regulate tenancy in terms of the numbers of people per household, but we're going to explore all the possibilities and concepts that have been tried elsewhere to address the excessive number of occupants in those dwellings.
So, when you're doing this review, will people be invited to come and to express their concern to you for these type of situations?
Exactly. We will have a consultation component to this exercise to make sure we do have input from the public, both the industry and from homeowners.
Okay, and just one final thing, if I may. I know we're always fairly sensitive about not pitting neighbor against neighbor, so if this consultation process, is there some way it could be private, confidential? You know, one doesn't want a neighbor to report their neighbor, which could create a lot of business for Chris.
Well, Mayor Given, we'll be looking at public consultation in the broad context, not looking at individual neighborhoods or existing secondary suites or anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
See, Councilor Tarrant.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a couple of questions for administration. First of all, can you let us know what type of volume we're dealing with now, like how many secondary suite applications we're receiving a month? Do you have any numbers?
Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you. Mayor Given, I don't have those numbers at my fingertips. I know that there's definitely several hundred in the city in terms of secondary suites. The part of the challenge is, in terms of historically, is that land use bylaws have changed, evolved over the years, so in addition to admittedly illegal suites that we may not have an accurate count on in the city, but we know they exist, there are secondary suites that have been approved under prior land use bylaws that may or may not meet today's definition or requirements. And thirdly, we have the category that we've been tracking just over the last year or so, and so I can certainly come back with those numbers if council would like to have them, but I don't have them at my fingertips today.
Just to be clear, Councilor Tarrant, you're asking for how many applications we were receiving per month over the last while? That wasn't how many total exist in the city, but how many applications we're receiving on a regular basis? Yeah, okay, just so the demonstration's clear on.
Then, you know, the next question I have is regards to perception and fairness. You know, anytime we move to discretionary, you know, there's always the question, well, what are the parameters that are going to be used to evaluate? And, you know, what, you know, if, you know, person A is going to get a permit, you know, under these conditions, you know, and not person B, you know, when there's not a clear set of guidelines? So, just wondering, would you publish some sort of a set of guidelines or, you know, what the intention would be of, so that you would give builders a little bit of certainty or attempt to?
Mr. McIntyre?
My on now. Mayor Given, the proposed amendments as discretionary uses, we'll pose a challenge to administration, no question about it. The specific criteria that we will be looking at, though, are having thought out, and we certainly will rely on professional judgment and working with the builders to arrive at a decision. The... So, lot size obviously is going to be a fundamental one because lot size dictates, in terms of how big the building is on the lot, will dictate how much space is available to meet yard requirements and parking, for example. The location of the property in terms of, is it a corner lot versus one in the middle of a block? That poses design opportunities and constraints that the development officer will look at as well. The general, the number of units and provision of parking in general, what the specific use may be required to have, is it going to be a one-bedroom or two-bedroom situation? And how is the design going to impact on utilities, so water and sewer and gas? At the outline pla... And just to elaborate a little bit on that, at the outline plan stage, so the pre-subdivision stage of development, atco electric and gas, aqua terra water and sewer, storm water are all infrastructure components that are dealt with at subdivision stage, and very much, the design will reflect the type of housing unit that's being proposed for the particular area. So, if, for example, atco or aqua terra have designed for a certain number of units per block, but suddenly they're experiencing customers that are, and the cumulative effect exceeds the design capacity of the neighborhood infrastructure, that could pose a problem eventually for those utilities. On a lesser level, Canada Post has experienced some issues in terms of just civic addressing and what numbers to assign to buildings and so on, so they go from a 135 to a 1A, 1B type of situation. So, again, not a major constraint in that regard, but something that does create administrative complications. Finally, if there is some doubt or if the applicant for a permit is not satisfied or they refuse to permit, then the appeal option is available to them, and of course, the SDAB would get involved and weigh in. So, I don't know, Mayor Given, if that addresses the questions sufficiently, but...
Councilor Tarrant?
Yes, thank you. And my final question was just on the appeal process. Is that going to change in any way with these changes?
No, exactly the same appeal process that's in place today.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. Councilor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given, and thank you, Michael. I don't think this is a new phenomenon. This has been going on for years in the city of Grand Prairie, and it's just escalated even faster, but there's quite a few of us that seen it coming a long time ago, and council can say yes or no to certain developments, and they said yes to an awful lot of these developments that were brought forward by planning. So, a couple of things I'm worried about, I'm not worried about the builder and developers. I'm worried about the buyers, and buyers are buying $350,000, $400,000 houses, and they have 20 houses across the street with secondary suites that weren't developed or designed in that area property. And I think, am I wrong, Michael, is West Point 50% secondary suites?
Mr. McIntyre?
Mayor Given, I don't have a percentage of the number of units. It's not half-developed in secondary suites. There are distinct areas. Would you like me to bring up the map again?
Have a look at the map again. Okay. Try that again. Oh.
So, this is, this is obviously, again, the West Point neighborhood. I don't think we're at 50% yet. The whole neighborhood is not yet built out, so this area here, I'm just, I don't know if you can see my cursor, and actually, I'll blow this up a little bit. This area here is still not built out yet. This area here on the west remains to be developed. There are some multi-unit sites in here, for example, towards 84th Avenue. So, but no question, there is a trend towards it developing. Builders are building for secondary suites, and so this is, it was this pattern that alerted administration that we have a potential problem on our hands, and it may not, I'm sure it's not the only area in the city where this is occurring, so you have to look at it kind of globally and say, okay, is this what we want our neighborhoods to develop as? Not that there's anything wrong with secondary suites in their own right, but if we're not planning for them, then we need to revisit it.
Okay. One more question, Mayor Given. Thank you. Michael, the other question, we had a couple councils ago about where a developer bad times came, so they didn't start the development, but it went through land use bylaws that happened, you know, were passed by two, three councils ago, and where they could open up to more secondary suites. Do we have anything within the city where if they did not start it with a new land use bylaw, that could kick in and say, okay, now you're void, you've sat on it for a decade, so changes are coming now? And council can make that direction, so, because we know there's more developers coming that put on hold during the downturn. that put on hold during the downturn, and are coming back and going off with the old model, where they never built in the first place. So is there anything put in place there?
Mr. McIntyre?
Mayor Given, development permits are essentially good for 12 months. So it's my opinion at this point, unless, you know, I get legal advice otherwise, that while permits that may have been issued before the bylaw came into effect in September of last year are still out there, and people are eligible to apply until September this year.
Mr. McIntyre, I think Counselor McLean's question is actually more about ASP, outline plan level documents that lay out lots and...
25% certain size.
And zoning. He's not actually asking about development permits.
I'm sorry, Mayor Given.
Yeah, I'm off track, but so...
So I guess your comment about development permits is that they're good for a year. What ability does council have to require a previously approved ASP to conform to new standards?
Well, the answer to that question is that it's the zoning or the districting that is in effect at the time that one applies for development permit. So while it's true that the outline plan, the area structure plan of the outline plan would have been council's expression of the types of housing or land uses intended to happen, it's ultimately the zoning that council adopted for those specific neighborhoods that would dictate what types of development can occur. Does that answer your question?
Counselor McLean?
Thank you, it does, and I thank you, Mayor Given, for bringing that up. And it's the zoning part where restrictions on 25% of certain type of style, close quarters, small lots that they're called, where they can go back and do even more from the previous zoning. I think there's a loophole at city staff, and council has to really look at with future developments. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just to follow up on some of Counselor McLean's comments, I had a couple of questions for administration. Are there any lots left in the area that we're looking at that don't have development permits on them already?
Mr. McIntyre?
I couldn't answer that question, Mayor Given. Just to be clear, I think this proposed land use bylaw amendment would actually apply citywide. So although Mr. McIntyre's highlighted a specific area of the city, this land use bylaw amendment would apply to the entire city, so...
I guess what I'm getting at is, it's great to have this going forward, but for permits that are, for areas that are already out there, though, we can count on that rest of the development in that area to all have secondary suites, even if we put this going forward, because especially when developers and builders get wind of the fact that there's going to be discretionary restrictions on developments, it's going to encourage the ones that are already out there to make sure that they get their secondary suites in. So it's, I mean, it's great to say that we're less than 50% now in that subdivision, but speculation says it's probably not going to be. I guess my concern is that this is a great...
I just want to clarify, this is an opportunity for questions for administration. We'll get into discussion and debate when we have the second...
So I guess my question would be then, and sort of follow up to Counselor Tarrant's comments and questions, is, does administration feel that the changes are feasible to facilitate? Because it's truly becoming a lot more of an administrative work here.
Mr. McIntyre?
I honestly don't think we have any choice, Mayor Given. We, I sense that there's a consensus that there's a potential problem with uncontrolled secondary suites. This interim amendment is something administration are urging as a relatively modest but essential step we need to take until we have a more comprehensive solution in place. What I mean by comprehensive is, based on public consultation, what does a community want their neighborhoods to look like in terms of secondary suites? Traditionally, like I said at the very beginning, tended to be kind of dispersed throughout neighborhoods. Not every block had them, some had several, but you never saw kind of a predominant kind of character of a neighborhood that was planned for singly detached, having, most of them having secondary suites. So it has very real implications for the capacity, as we agreed on. So I feel that administration will do our very best to make sure that we do it judiciously. And any challenges, well, the appeal option is available so that people will have equal opportunity to make their case.
Okay, thanks very much. Counselor Rice?
Just a clarification, if I could, Mr. McIntyre. Should council do second and third reading this evening? Then these changes would become effective roughly 7:08 tonight. Is that not correct? There wouldn't be an opportunity for people to rush in and do these secondary suites before this became law. It becomes, it becomes in effect the moment we pass the third reading. Is that not correct?
Exactly. Once, of course, signed by the mayor and the clerk.
Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. This is a question for administration, Mr. McIntyre, or perhaps even Mr. Manuel. It's already been stated that we already are aware that there's probably a fair number of illegal secondary suites already in Grand Prairie and functioning as secondary suites illegally. What's our current process for dealing with that? And also, what would our future process be? Is it just like ticketing, fine? Do they have to remove the people from premises? What are the disciplinary actions that we take on people using secondary suites that are illegal?
Mr. McIntyre?
Secondary suites, in my experience, come to our attention, that is administration's attention, usually through complaints. Either a tenant, an adjacent property owner, or the Department of Health. Sometimes a building inspector may encounter or come across a situation where there's an issue. And finally, the fire department, the fire marshal may identify premises that are not up to code. So there's a number of possible ways that we can discover an illegal suite. And the options, usually when the landowners, the property owners informed, is they have the opportunity to apply if the land use bylaw allows for it, and go through the proper procedures, make sure they get a unit that's up to building code and so on, fire code. Or if it's not permitted, then it's essentially a cease and desist type of situation.
Thanks. Counselor Thiessen, can I go for you?
Mr. McIntyre, I just have one question in there. You mentioned that administration would look at process of public notification and consultation of other surrounding landowners. Had administration considered situations where a single landowner may own multiple lots within an area? So essentially, the only adjacent landowner would be themselves?
Not until this moment, Mayor Given.
So I just would suggest that that might be something that you'd want to consider how you'd handle that, given that a lot of these are in new areas. Wouldn't be a surprise to me if there was somebody that had owned multiple lots on a single street that would build a similar product. So just something for administration to consider as they go through the process, if this passes tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Given.
No other questions for administration? Still have an opportunity for members of the public to come forward, and I'll move to that now. I'll open the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. This is an opportunity for anybody in the community that had any concerns or opinions around this proposed land use bylaw amendment to come forward and address council and share their views or ask their questions. Was there anybody that wanted to come forward to speak to this proposed amendment to make secondary suites discretionary? Looks like we do have somebody that's going to take us up on the offer. If you ask enough times, eventually somebody will come. Please have a seat and introduce yourself for our recording secretary, and please be welcome.
Thank you very, excuse me, thank you very much. My name is Leif Anderson, and thank you very much, Mayor Given, council, administration, for the opportunity to speak this evening on the secondary suite issue. I feel it is something that is very much of interest to a city of our size, growing as fast as we are, and feeling the housing pressures that we are across our city, from affordable housing, whether it's rental or affordable housing in terms of buying a house. We've all seen here recently, with the growth of our city and the housing pressures, our price of our housing going up and our affordability going down, both in terms of rents and in terms of purchases. I do have a few questions in relation to the changes as proposed. Not disagreeing with them, just looking for seeking answers and information. Looking at cities of similar size, such as Medicine Hat, Red Deer, Lethbridge, I don't really count Wood Buffalo, because they're growing so fast, they have their own issues. But with those other cities, what do they do in relation to secondary suites and how they're proposed? Also, would there be any sort of issues, as it appears to be, in relation to West Point here? These sorts of developments in relation to West Point, and currently Crystal Landing as well, with some of the proposed developments up there, where this seems to have been a little bit of an administration or a city issue, perhaps in consultation with the developer, where too many of these types of properties with secondary suites, as identified in the map that was presented earlier, where we have an oversaturation. Whereas, you know, maybe there could be something put in place where we'll, as administration had mentioned earlier, where we'll allow a certain percentage, maybe perhaps it's 25%, whatever meets the requirements for that area in relation to Aqua Terra, ATCO, and the other service providers in those areas. Because one of the issues, as well as identified in the pictures, is garbage removal, but the bigger concern becomes as well is getting emergency vehicles into any of these areas. And, you know, the pictures that we're taking were great, but they don't show the picture in Grand Prairie about six months of the year. Snow, ice, ruts, where you really, it's, you're down to one lane going each way, and it's next to impossible, I'm willing to bet, to get a fire truck down any of these roads. And I think that becomes a little bit of a public safety concern as well. And I think that has to be weighed into the whole concern. In relation to, I think Counselor Tarrant had mentioned it, is what will be the process for a landowner or for a developer to obtain a secondary suite permit? I've heard a little bit of discussion about it here this evening, but just wondering, seeking clarification on what will be the steps to get that? And what will be the development, or sorry, pardon me, the appeal process? I understand that's probably not, that's not going to be changing, so it's probably easy to find that out. In relation to secondary suites, will this apply at all to properties that have mother-in-law suites at all? Or will this just be for developments going forward? The other questions as well, there are other things I'm just seeking clarification on, is anytime a change is made by any sort of administration body, is what will be the unintended consequence? And by this, what I mean is, if we're seeking to make a change going forward to make it so that we don't have these situations such as West Point, what will be the unintended consequence? Will we be looking at driving those types of properties up in terms of their pricing? Will we be intending to, or not intending, but will it create the unintended consequence of increasing our rents, because it's going to reduce those types of affordable housing units in our city? I think that is something that should be considered as part of the whole process. Again, I'm not disagreeing with it. I just think that it's something that has to be considered. With a vacancy rate right now of roughly 1% to 1.5%, we do have a lot of multifamily units being proposed and into various stages of development, which will help to ease the housing crunch right now. And we know it is all cyclical, to which none of us have any control over the economy and where we are in the real estate cycle and in the economic cycle. But I think that unintended consequences are something that you don't really realize until six months, a year, five years down the road. And I think that that's something that maybe should be considered as part of this. And another question as well, is there a map or a listing of all current properties in the city which have legal-conforming secondary suites? Like, for instance, you know, we've got lots in West Point, we've got a fair amount in Crystal Landing right now, and I know there's others sprinkled throughout the city, but I was just curious, is there a mapping where a person could say, okay, for instance, in Mission Heights, we've got 10 in Mission Heights in the whole area? Okay, but in West Point, we've got whatever it is, 150 or whatever the number is. And the other final question I would have is, if a property owner had a complaint filed by, as was mentioned, former tenant, fire marshal, any of those other sorts of procedures, what would be the ability of the property owner in lieu of removing the secondary suite? If he wasn't able to meet the development officer's requirements for a secondary suite there, for whatever reason, would the landowner be allowed to sell the property as is? Or would the landowner have to remove the non-conforming secondary suite prior to sale? That is all that I have, and I thank you very much.
Thanks very much. We may have, there may be some questions from council on your presentation. And if administration was kind of going through and was able to capture some of Mr. Anderson's questions, I'll give you a chance to prepare some responses to that, because I heard at least one, a couple about process, and at least one at the end there about if somebody had to sell a suite, how, under what conditions were they, would they be able to sell it? So it's just one of them that I captured. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given, and thank you, Leif, for coming here and doing your presentation. It's great to see the public come out and be involved and engaged in the process. So as Chair of the Community Growth, anybody that's wanting to do a discretionary secondary suite would have to come to the Community Growth. And I can tell you since October that we've had members of the community come here and ask, and some have been denied. And it's because of location and some of the concerns that you raised about, basically, emergency response, stuff like that. The roads are narrow, the lots are small, and that kind of stuff. We've also had some accepted, and I can tell you one individual that to come, he had a mother-in-law that was in her late 80s, needed some health and some, not really necessarily hospitalized or institutionalized, but what a great experience having your mother and father, or whatever the case may be, in their final years, and you're looking after them after all the years they've looked after you. So it can be emotional, but with that, they're not necessarily driving, and they're not usually taking up a lot of space in the driveway and stuff like that. So it's a decision that the Community Growth makes. And there's a lot of factors that go in to making that decision, so... And we consider most of the ones that you had brought up. Wanted to share that with you.
See Counselor Rice as well. Counselor Rice?
Mr. McIntyre, do you have maps for every neighborhood in Grand Prairie similar to the West Point one that you had up on the screen?
Mayor Given, I don't have any with me this evening.
No, I mean, do you have them?
Yes.
You have them, so are they available to the public?
No.
No? Okay. But you have them, so you're aware of the enormity of the situation in all areas of the city.
Yes, indeed.
Thank you.
Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given, thank you, Leif, for coming today. And a lot of questions, so the administration's going to have to be looking at some, and I think it's also a goal that the city really has to respond to this and turn it around, because it's getting quite aggressively in one way. The other thing is too, I think, is also some of it's provincial. Building codes, that's national, but one with fire. Some of them can build secondary suites, and they call them granny suites, say, out in the county, and might reduce the cost of $15,000 per unit. So there's things happening outside the boundaries. We're talking within the city that reflects things as well. So I think questions can go as pro, process within the province to be looked at as well, so just throwing that out there.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Any questions for the delegation? Mr. McIntyre, were you able to put together any responses to a couple of the questions that Mr. Anderson asked?
Mayor Given, I did try and take notes, and I think I will do my best to respond to the ones I think I captured. I think one of the first questions that our delegation asked was, what do other cities do? Well, this is something we will kind of delve into in depth in our comprehensive review. The, pardon me, a lot of cities approach secondary suites in a very similar way to the City Grand Prairie. Our climate certainly is a big factor in terms of how workable, or how well they might translate from one city to another. What works well in Vancouver, or Calgary, or Toronto wouldn't necessarily work well here. In some jurisdictions, they've attempted to regulate, just to give you some insight, that we have certainly explored this. They have attempted to explore secondary suites by defining them as owner-occupied dwellings, so that one has to actually, the owner of the property actually has to live in the dwelling in order to have a suite. That has been challenged legally in some jurisdictions. So I don't know if that's actually feasible, but it is an example of something others have tried, something we will probably look at. look at. And the question came up about West Point versus other neighborhoods, and I think the question's been answered, yes, this is not just unique to West Point, there are secondary suites of different kind of eras right across the city. New ones going into neighborhoods, whether it's Royal Oaks, or Cobblestone, or Riverstone, or West Point, O'Brien. The potential is there for all these neighborhoods to have secondary suites. There are different alternatives to secondary dwellings or accessory dwellings in the bylaw. One of them is garage suites, which is a new option available in the current land use bylaw. We haven't seen too much activity in that particular form of housing, but that's sort of akin to a granny flat or an in-law suite, so I don't know if, you know, this is semantics we're dealing with, or whether there's a kind of a distinct architectural form that's been referenced, but that will be part of this review as well. There was a question about what happens to suites that are perhaps created legally but are maybe rendered illegal or non-conforming as a result of a change in the bylaw. Non-conforming uses are protected under the Act, so if one received a permit for any use legally pursuant to the land use bylaw, then that use can continue in perpetuity. However, the Act also does say that if a use ceases for six months, then the use cannot be resumed after that period, so it would have to be simply another part of the dwelling that is occupied as part of a single unit. Unintended consequences, very good question. I think the circumstance we're seeing now, or the trend we're seeing now, is actually, is precisely an unintended consequence of trying to respond to the housing affordability crisis that the city was going through. Not just currently, but certainly in past years, when the vacancy rates were equally lower, even lower, and the city was struggling to find solutions to let the pressure up. So the provisions for secondary suites were, I think, relaxed fairly significantly. The process for getting one was relatively simple and straightforward. And while it responded, I think somewhat to certainly the housing issue in that, at that period, we're now seeing, while people are, builders are responding, or the market is responding to the demand for housing, the capacity of our neighborhoods in terms of what they were designed for is being exceeded. So very good point, something we strive to anticipate and plan for, and we will continue. Is there a map showing distribution of secondary suites? Yes, we have been recently creating maps and trying to mine the databases, whether it's an assessment, or previous zoning, or land use information, to create a realistic picture of the distribution. We know it's incomplete. It's difficult in some instances to tell legal suites from illegal, we simply have evidence that there are suites there. What are the rights of landowners with regard to an illegal suite? Well, I addressed that question, also came from counsel earlier, and once administration become aware of it, we investigate, we confirm it's illegal, then if there is an option to apply for a legal suite, that offer, option is extended to the property owner. If it's not, then they're given written orders that the use must cease and desist. Mayor Given, I don't know if there's any others that I missed in there, I'm sure I missed at least one or two.
Sounds like you did a pretty good job. I do see Counsel Terren, though, maybe he has a question of his own from the delegation?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Actually, just one question for administration. In terms of timelines, when do you expect to have proposed changes brought back to council?
Mayor Given, at this point, we're looking towards the end of the year, beginning of 2015.
Thanks very much. Mr. Anderson, did you have anything further? Did you have any further questions or other comments for counsel?
Two other questions. As part of the process to date, were the, was the Grand Prairie Homeowners, or sorry, Home Builders Association, were they consulted? And was their input sought prior to the changes as proposed? And just maybe a clarification of an earlier question, if a property owner should have a complaint brought forward to the city, and enforcement is involved, for whatever reason, in lieu of, or if the property owner is unable to successfully apply for a secondary suite permit, for whatever reason, in relation to the changes as proposed, is the property owner allowed to sell that property as is, in terms of keeping that secondary suite, if it is non-conforming? Or will the property owner have to remove the secondary suite prior to sale of that property, should they choose that option? Just clarifications, all it is.
Sure, so that last one specifically, Mr. McIntyre, if a property owner has something that is contrary to what they're allowed to have under their development permit, what ability do they have to sell it, or can they sell it as is, where is, and then the responsibility is the responsibility of the purchaser?
Mayor Given, I guess there's two aspects to that question. Number one, if the use was approved as a legal use at the time it was constructed, and is rendered non-conforming by virtue of a change in the bylaw, if I understand the question correctly, that use has a non-conforming status, and as I mentioned, can continue on, unless it ceases for six months, at which point it then has to conform to the current bylaw that's in place. If that were to happen, or if there simply happened to be an illegal suite, then in terms of the property being sold, and I guess whatever legal implications might be attached to that, I can't speak as a lawyer, obviously. The thing to keep in mind is that the land use bylaw is about controlling uses first and foremost, so if there is, if there are features of a dwelling that make it obvious that this is two units, not one, or it's one unit with an independent or separate dwelling unit, then there's no requirement under the land use bylaw for the physical state of the, or condition of the unit to be changed. It becomes a question of, one can no longer rent it out, or have a separate household or use in it. The building code, fire code, may have other implications for a unit like that as well, whether it's non-conforming or illegal.
Thanks, Mr. McIntyre, and Ms. Galante, I think you also had a little bit of response as well, what tools are available?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. The Building Inspection Department can issue a do not occupy order into the illegal secondary suite, if the city is aware of that, as well as a notation can be deposited on title for the property. So a prospective buyer, at time of due diligence, when they pull title, they will see the notation on title as well.
Thanks, Ms. Galante. Counsel Rice, was it for our delegation? Pardon me, for the delegation? Okay, okay. Mr. Anderson, thanks very much, thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Was there anybody else that wanted to come forward to address counsel on the proposed amendments to the land use bylaw? I'll ask one more time, is there anybody else that wanted to come forward to address counsel on this proposed amendment? Okay, I don't see anybody. Is there anybody from counsel that had any questions for administration before I close the present, before I close the public hearing? Counsel Rice?
Just one question to Mr. McIntyre. Oh, for lack of a better, more technical term, I'll call them flop houses. Where are those, or maybe Mr. Manuel knows that, but where are they, where are they regulated?
Counsel Rice, can you define what you mean?
Those, where I, they just beds that they rent out to people, five, six, eight, as I mentioned, the earlier ones.
So without, so not a separate contained dwelling unit?
Not a separate contained, bedrooms where they rented out, yeah.
With beds, okay. Mr. Manuel?
Yeah, I think I'm live here. So in short answer, public health is typically what deals with that, and that's, and it could also be fire as well, or building codes. It's really a matter of, the room has to be an appropriate size, it has to have egress, those sorts of things. So there is an informal team, I guess, that gets together and addresses concerns raised about those places.
And you respond to those upon complaint?
Upon complaint, correct.
Thank you.
So I will close the public hearing and look for business arising from the public hearing, look for a motion for second reading. Counsel Rice?
Second reading of bylaw C. 126010. And if I could speak to that, I would commend Mr. McIntyre and his staff for a very proactive approach to a growing problem, so that we can deal with it before it really gets out of control.
Thanks, Counsel Rice. Any discussion or debate on the motion for second reading? Counsel McLean?
Mayor Given, I'm very looking forward to administration really looking into this. The signals were out there for a long time, so it's time to get a hold of this, and for counsel to wait for that six months of feedback, and to really make a strong direction, a positive direction.
Thanks, Counsel McLean. Counsel Clayton?
I also agree that this is a great start, but I look forward to what administration comes back with going forward, because I don't think it's as big of a step as we need to help solve some of the problems. Thanks.
Any further discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing nobody else ringing in, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion on second reading carries, could I have a motion for third reading?
C. 1260-10.
Thanks very much, Counsel Rice. So motion for third and final reading, any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. That handles all of our public hearing business for this evening. We move in and through unfinished business, as we had none, and we'll go to item 8.1, reports. In front of counsel is the strategic priorities chart, the updated strategic priorities chart from July to September 2014. Counsel has that in their package, and I'd look for a motion to adopt the strategic priorities chart as presented. Counsel McLean?
Mayor Given, I move counsel through the strategic priorities chart for the term July, from July to September 2014.
Thanks very much, Counsel McLean. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Counsel Rice?
Time frame, July to September?
Typically, we run in three to four month cycles, like these are intended to be generally, annually, or sorry, quarterly. September, three months? Any other discussion or debate, questions or comments? I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and would take us into committee business, and we'll start with Municipal Government Day Team Meeting from May. Counsel Thiessen, is that your meeting? If you'd like to move the minutes for that meeting?
I move that counsel adopt and receive the minutes of the Municipal Government Day Team Meeting held May 14, 2014.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Does it look like we got everything correct? Must have, since there's nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Thiessen, is there anything you want to highlight from that set of minutes?
Actually, it was a pretty straightforward meeting. Administration and our team here got together, and they pretty much said, hey, we got this under control, we're just going to check off all the boxes. So it was a pretty quick and efficient meeting, and it went over without a hitch, as we all know, since we were all down at Municipal Government Day. There is a great crowd, and we're going to meet again here in August, so outside of that, nothing really exciting.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thiessen. Nothing further on that agenda item, then we'll move on to 9.2, the 100th Anniversary Committee Meeting. Counsel Rice? If you don't ring in, I can't turn on your microphone.
Okay. I move that counsel receive the minutes of the 100th Anniversary Committee Meeting of June 10, 2014.
Thanks very much, Counsel Rice. Discussion and debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Rice, anything to update us on from 100?
Just as quickly as I can, it's been an exciting year so far. The Century Play was a success, Fire Fit Challenge was a success, Soapbox Derby was a success, Singing Symphony in the Park was a success, as well as numerous other events. Still more to come. The history book will be unveiled July 31 during the spectacular celebration, the homecoming event, which you can expect a big breakfast sponsored by Canfor, and a mixer the evening before at the Chamber of Commerce. The airport on August 2 is doing a fly-in, and so we'll have lots of out-of-town visitors flying in. The RCMP musical ride, of course, the big concert with numerous presenters, including Ian Tyson and Natalie McMaster, Fred Penner. The 100 Years of Transportation display, Counsel O'Toole has many, many, many pieces of equipment, it'll be, it promises to be a rather exciting display. And of course, you won't want to miss going down to Muscahapi Park tomorrow to see the bed race with the fabulous council team. And there is all sorts of other things. I'm going to ask counsel's, counsel's patience, I have a rather long list, but I think it's an important list. On Wednesday evening at 6:00 PM at the Montrose Cultural Center, the Teresa Sargent Hall, the committee will be naming the first 25 of the 100 parks. And I just want to very quickly go over the list for counsel of what parks will be named. Dare Family, Bickel Pond, Gordon and Hazel Bloomfield Park, Roy Peterson Park, Bill and Margaret Bowes Park, Angie Queerer Park, Crokin Family Park, Dalen Family Park, Alvera Grotkowski Park, Mack and Chris Henderson Park, Bill Besant Park, the Longmate Family Park, Elmer Logan Park, Lilian Matheson Park, Perky McCullough Park, Menzies Family Park, Monkman Family Park, Gordon and Irene Piercy Park, George Repka Park, Carter Rycroft Park, the Sargent Family Park, Harry Schneider Park, the Mates Family Park, Veterans Park, the J.B. Oliver Family Park. And last but not least, we will at that point be naming the pavilion at Muscahapi Park, the Ernie Radburn Pavilion. So I think it'll be a very emotional, very special, and the committee believes that we have balanced a cross-section of the people in Grand Prairie that built this community and the various endeavors from the social, from the social services to the sporting community, to the educational community, and of course, recognizing our veterans, who is why we can all live here as openly and unoppressively as we do.
Thanks very much, Counsel Rice, and thanks to the entire 100th Anniversary Committee for all their work. We'll move on to 9.3, Combatant Sports Commission, Counsel O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move the counsel receive the minutes for the Combatant Sports Commission Meeting held June 12, 2014.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes?
If you wouldn't mind, I could just highlight a couple items that came up. We are looking at a bylaw review, there's a number of things that have changed over the year, both federally and provincially, and we are looking at doing that right now. The process has started. We had a review of the April 19 event, and the do's and the don'ts, and what worked good and what didn't work good. We do that every event, just to make sure that we're on top of everything, to make sure that the people that are putting on the events get the best that they can get. We discuss the amateur legalities, and at this present time, we're not doing too much about it, and considering a drug testing option in the near future for the competitors. That's just a short and sweet.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, then I will call for the Seeing none, then I will call for the vote on that set of minutes? Thank you. That motion carries and would take us, I believe, to the council committee of the whole meeting. Uh, Counselor McLean?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Given. I move counsel receive the minutes of the council committee of the whole meeting held June sixteenth, two thousand fourteen.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Don't see anybody ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Uh, we'd look for a motion. Uh, we had two recommendations coming out of that committee. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the council approve the renovations to the leisure center and reopen the pools, the program pool operating eighty hours per day.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the council approve the renovations and reopening of the Bear Creek outdoor pool with consideration to include increasing the area of the shallow end.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I will, Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. Uh, sorry to slow down the proceedings, but, uh, uh, I'm a little torn on this one because I, I do have sentimental attachment to some of the Bear Creek. Uh, I also have the belief that it's, uh, it's, uh, not going to withstand, uh, the test of time over frosty winters. Um, I am intrigued, uh, by the, uh, increasing the area of the shallow end purpose of, of this pool. Uh, I'm not certainly sold on the fact that it will be as affordable as we hope it will be in order to keep and restore the pool. Um, I hate to be a flip-flopper, but I think I'm changing my vote here tonight, so.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Uh, any further discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, uh, I also will not be voting in favor of this. I, I also believe that, uh, we have an estimate on what it's gonna cost to repair, but I don't think that we can get down and, down and dirty and look until we take it out of the ground and do the renovations. This is a fifty-plus-year-old building and I would rather see the money that's gonna be put into this, uh, turned into a spray park in that area and o- offer, offer the opportunity to have, uh, spray parks in other areas of the city as well.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Clayton?
I think that the aquatics study says it all. Uh, the highest percentage of people that supported the facility that they supported was Bear Creek Pool. Spray parks were the least supported. Uh, and even though there was sixty-six percent of the people that took the aquatic center, supported the opening of the leisure center, broken down into two different groups, uh, Bear Creek Pool, Pool, single-handedly had the most support in our community and it's essential for the young demographic, uh, to our community in our region. It, it suits people based on many levels, whether it's tourism, uh, active life. Uh, it's just a, a great opportunity for us to enjoy this small, short summer that we already have. And I think it's, uh, essential for going forward for us to have the Bear Creek Pool. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Counselor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will be supporting, uh, the reopening of the Bear Creek Pool with, uh, emphasis on the, uh, expansion of the shallow end and making it more of a waiting pool and friendly year for, uh, larger number of, uh, children and, and toddlers of, and, uh, our younger population. Um, you know, I, I also want to respond to some of the comments that have been made about, uh, you know, the, the costs of renovating an old facility. And, um, you know, I think that those are very legitimate. Um, and, you know, it's a consideration we have in, in any, uh, renovating any older facilities. And, you know, I think we have to look at, you know, the leisure center. You know, we've, we just had the vote on that. But, uh, you know, if that's, if that was, you know, a concern, that's gonna be a much greater scale, both in terms of your capital expenditures and in terms of our operating. It's gonna have a major impact on our, um, you know, when it comes to budget time, whereas the Bear Creek Pool will have a fairly minimal in comparison. It's, uh, you know, it's, it's peanuts really, when you look at the operating costs compared to the leisure center. So, you know, for that reason, I think I'm gonna be supporting, uh, the Bear Creek Pool.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Tarrant. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion does not carry. Uh, with four opposed and three in favor. Um, so we would move on to item nine point five, the community growth committee meeting from June seventeenth. Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, I move the council receive the minutes of the community growth committee meeting held on June seventeenth, twenty fourteen.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Anything we need to note?
I could speak on, uh, some of the items that were brought to the meeting. Uh, Chamber of Commerce, uh, discussed the, um, signage that they would like to see around the, uh, the current bypass next to the Legion Sports Field there. Uh, it would be a sign that would be, uh, used for emergency services as well as some for-profit advertising. Uh, the location that they requested originally has been changed. Uh, it was near, closer to the bridge and, uh, with consideration, they've decided to move it on to city property, uh, not having to deal with the provincial government. Uh, so that's still in the works. Um, also, we had a couple of, of requests for communication towers by Rogers. Uh, one was in the Chelsea Villas area and, uh, it was denied. Uh, but they are working with administration to find another location, which would be more suitable, possibly. And also one on Resources Road, and we allowed that one to take place. Also, we, uh, had some discussion and, uh, passed the allowance of the Arbor Hills entrance feature. And we'll be looking forward to a very beautiful entrance feature for the number of years to come.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Uh, Counselor Tarrant, something on the set of minutes?
Yes, thank you. Just a question, uh, in regards to the signage, the, uh, Chamber of Commerce sign. Um, I recollect in, in several months ago with community growth committee passed a motion, um, where the intent was that we would allow no private advertising on public land. Just wondering, was that, uh, decision turned around or, uh, someone could give, uh, some clarification on that?
Uh, I'll look to our community growth director, Ms. Ferguson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, there was a direction by committee to, uh, prepare a draft bylaw that would address, um, and amend the use of public lands bylaw and address that situation. That bylaw has not been brought back to committee at this point in time. So we will be addressing both that bylaw and the chamber's request for the alternate location at the same time, uh, in, in the near future.
Thank you. Counselor McLean?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Given. I wonder if administration, isn't this provincial land? Is it my wrong on that one?
Mr. Mayor, one of the directions from committee was to confirm and identify and confirm the, uh, proposed site that was being brought forward, the new site. And that will, we will be doing that as well.
Thanks very much. Um, so we're still on the minutes of that meeting from June seventeenth. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole, I think you covered all the business from that meeting, didn't you? Okay, we'll move on to our next committee, um, which is Counselor Tarrant. I think you're gonna step in for Counselor Radburn. Is that right?
Yes. Mayor Given, I would like to move that the, that council receive the minutes of the community living committee held on June seventeenth, two thousand fourteen.
Thanks very much, Counselor Tarrant. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Tarrant?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor Given. We do have a couple, uh, recommendations coming out of that committee. But before that, I'd like to just give a little, uh, update on what all went on at, uh, the meeting there. We had, uh, delegation, um, Ms. Kathy Guerin came and was concerned about some of the, uh, the dandelion problem that we've had here this year. And so we had a really good discussion. And we had our parks manager there who was able to inform us, uh, some of the turf management practices that are coming forth and, and some of the, uh, things that will be presented at budget. Uh, we also talked about, you know, s- some ideas about having a, a rotation or, or targeting certain areas with, uh, dandelion control, uh, measures. And so it was, it was a good conversation and I think, uh, the delegation was pleased that, uh, there was, uh, things being done to, to take, um, to address the issue. Um, we had some, several, uh, uh, excellent delegations come forward just to talk about, uh, some of the, uh, programs that they're offering the community. And so it was great to see, um, communities come forward on that. Uh, and there was, uh, a couple more, uh, things, uh, Counselor O'Toole brought up, um, some of the issues regarding, uh, MMA exhibition events and some of the, um, changes that have come, uh, out recently in regards to, uh, amateur fighters. And, uh, so we, we're, uh, it was, it was more of an information update and we're gonna wait and see what, uh, the provincial or the provincial government, uh, if they're gonna do anything regarding, uh, regarding those issues brought up. Um, the, uh, other, uh, item that we talked about was, uh, looking at the Community Connections, um, publication that the city puts out, uh, quarterly and, uh, how we could maybe make that more accessible online and make it, uh, more interactive and, uh, a greater use to the public. Uh, and with that, I will move into, uh, the recommendation that, um, council support the Mighty Peace Youth Society's request for sponsorship funding for Mighty Peace Day in the budget years two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen, and that the funding force, uh, son, the funding source to be determined at budget deliberations. Sorry, I'm gonna move that. Sorry.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Tarrant. Uh, discussion or debate on that motion for confirmation Mighty Peace Day funding? Counselor Rice?
I'm a little uncomfortable with us making commitments ahead of the budget. Um, in, in essence, that's what you're doing. You're making some of the budget decisions tonight. And I guess our standard practice is to refer items like this to the budget, uh, or identify a source of funding now. So I'm, I'm not quite sure why we're doing it in this fashion.
Sure. Um, I'm not sure if anybody cares to speak to that. Counselor Tarrant?
The, uh, the intent, and I believe it's in the motion, is that we're, uh, we're requesting support and that, that support would be resourced at budget time.
I, I think, uh, part of the question, uh, this, I think, there was delegation that presented, uh, they were looking to get confirmation of financial support to enable them to do their twenty fifteen in particular planning. Um, there are some logistics that they are needing to do. And so I think the committee was actually recommending a confirmation of funding, but not the source until budget. So, so you're right, Counselor Rice, it is a, a dedication of their funding request. Um, in part, because there was some, and going by memory, there was some gift and kind requested as well, that would be through the facility, through the venue. Um, and I believe that that was also needed for administration to do some of their business planning. So.
How much money are we, are we talking? I mean, you know, when we get the budget, we'll have, our slashing pen is, is always working rather rapidly. And there will be requests from numerous organizations asking for money that will get slashed. And it sounds to me like then we, this one wouldn't fall into that category. So how much money are we talking?
Ca- Counselor Tarrant?
Yes, uh, we're talking about, uh, it was five thousand dollars in cash support, five thousand dollars in gift and kind.
Okay, so we're not talking a quarter of a million or, okay. Okay, fine. I'm still uncomfortable with the process, but, okay.
Well, keeping in mind in terms of process, council, a couple motions previous made some fairly significant funding commitments, um, by way of aquatics facilities that, uh, we saw, saw fit to do here tonight, so. Certainly present for it today even.
They're, they're for things that will start happening immediately.
Okay, any further discussion or debate? Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. Um, I was just wondering, just to go off of what Counselor Rice was saying, is, I mean, it's not a lot of money. Is there a way that we could find a source for it now? Like, is, could we refer to administration and perhaps look for funding in our current budget or?
I think the reason that it was here was because there was no, uh, availability of funding within the city's sponsorship budgets or others. Uh, so that's why we're looking to the twenty fifteen year. Uh, but the group needed to know before January first of twenty fifteen that they would have monies available to them, so they could plan a February, I believe it was February twenty fifteen event. Okay. So, so they're looking for that confirmation that it would be there. Administration's recommendation was that it would be from that future budget year, um, because, uh, our sponsorship dollars for twenty fourteen are already significantly. All right, very good. Thank you. Counselor McLean?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question on this. Uh, I can't remember what the age limit, uh, that went to this. And it was success, uh, the first one they had. What was the age limit between, uh, at the event?
Yeah, uh, Counselor O'Toole, do you wanna take a stab at that?
Yeah, sorry about that, uh, for jumping in, but it was, uh, I think grade nine and till graduation.
So it's certain school age children?
Grade five to grade ten, sorry. Corrected again. Grade five to grade ten.
Uh, Counselor Thiessen, did you have another question? You're back in my queue. Counselor Rice?
I will support the motion, uh, very reluctantly. I will support the motion because I, I support this initiative. But I really am uncomfortable with groups sneaking in the back door, if you will. And, and certainly, I believe it's unfair to the rest of the groups who will be applying for sponsorship funding during our, our budget deliberations and on into twenty fifteen. But I believe this is a worthwhile initiative and I, I will support it, but I certainly will hope that this doesn't sort of become a pattern.
Thanks, Counselor Rice. Counselor Clayton?
Just quickly, um, this event, uh, had over four thousand youth from our area. And their primary concern with securing the funds now is that in order for them to be fiscally responsible, they don't want to be knocking on the door of every business, uh, asking for money that they don't necessarily need. If they can confirm their sponsorship and their gift and kind stuff now, it makes the time for the volunteers that run this event more efficient to get the event, uh, done in a timely matter. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Any further discussion or debate? Counselor Thiessen, did you want back in again?
Please.
Turn on your microphone.
Thank you, Mayor Bill. Um, I'm not sure, uh, if it exactly falls under the parameters, uh, but I know, uh, sitting on the arts committee that, uh, we have some funding left over for the fall. If that's a possible funding source for an event like this, uh, perhaps we could fast-track the process come September and not even have to take it to the budget.
So the motion today is to confirm that we're gonna support the event in twenty fifteen and twenty fourteen. Uh, the second part of the motion is that the funding source be determined at budget deliberations. Um, funding it out of the city's twenty fourteen surplus, if any, is one of those potential options. So if there was money left over in, in the festival funding or something, that would be one of those options that's available to administration, for sure, certainly. Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I will be voting in supporting of this. I do have the same concern as, uh, my counterpart, Counselor Rice. Um, but when there is four thousand people, uh, youth that have, uh, traveled, not only out of the city here, but from the northeast, south east, um, and they get to spend a day with some mentors of North America, uh, I think that's, uh, a bonus. And, uh, these are not just children. They, they have to qualify in order to come. And so these are the, the mentors of their schools. And I think, uh, that's one of the reasons why I'm supporting this.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Tarrant, I think you had one more piece of business from that meeting.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Given. Actually, I'm gonna be, uh, declaring a conflict of interest on, uh, this motion and, uh, Counselor Clayton will be making it.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Tarrant. Counselor Tarrant will declare conflict of interest on this item and we'll leave the council chambers. Counselor Clayton?
Uh, Counselor Claren is declaring a conflict as a family member is affiliated with the Kool-Aid Society. Uh, as discussed at our meeting, uh, Director Roth had, uh, presented a report from the Kool-Aid Society suggesting that they might not have the funds to run their summer program, uh, and that they possibly would shorten their hours. Um, committee had discussed this and, uh, and is making recommendation today that council approve an emergency allocation of twenty thousand dollars from the special project funds to the Kool-Aid Society.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor Any discussion or debate on the motion councillor McLean?
Thank you mayor Given. I will be supporting this motion. Uh, I believe with youngest city in Canada and now we know it's more children are four than over 65, there's some children fall in a certain category that need assistance and help and in the reading program they have. And I believe it's a very good program for the city and hopefully, uh, this is only to get through the summer. So hopefully by then Gary Roth and everybody be coming forward with what's gonna happen because I believe they have two facilities in the city and they do great work.
Thanks councillor McLean. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries, sorry, motion had enough votes, motion does in fact carry, uh, and we can call in back in councillor Terrence. Councillor Terrence, we've dealt with all the items I think on the community living committee. Was there anything else you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes? Did you do that up front?
Yes, I think I covered everything.
Thanks very much, uh, you're still not off the hook? Arts development is up next and I think that's you as well.
Yes, just a second here, I will move that council approve the minutes of the arts development, uh, committee meeting of June 20th, 2014.
Thanks councillor Terrence, any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Anything you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes councillor Terrence?
Yes, thank you. So there was a, a motion from the committee to look at the, uh, art development, uh, grants and, uh, to have, uh, a look at particularly the festival funding. Uh, right now, um, the program, we're not really sure, there's, there's some clauses in there that seem, seem, make it seem like it was designed as a sort of seed funding, but, uh, in reality, it hasn't really become a seed funding program. There's a lot of, um, organizations that, uh, receive festival funding have, and have for the last, uh, you know, decade. And, uh, so we're looking at, uh, we've directed administration to come back with some options looking at what, um, what can be done to maybe a portion, uh, um, sorry, to have part of the festival funding as seed money and, and part of it as a established, uh, festival funding and to look at, you know, maybe different rules around, uh, around those. Um, and then we also looked at, uh, there was also a motion from the committee to look at, uh, the funding levels to see whether, uh, just looking based on historical patterns and what's been requested, to see if, uh, if the numbers are, the funding is adequate and seeing if there's maybe any recommendations that could be made at, at budget time.
Thanks very much councillor Terrence. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? It looks like we all have all our t's crossed and our i's dotted. We must because nobody's ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries and would take us to 9.8, the community safety committee meeting from June 24th, councillor McLean.
Thank you mayor Given. Uh, I move council receive the minutes of a community safety meeting held June 24th, 2014.
Thanks very much councillor McLean. Anything, uh, that you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes? Other than the business that we'll deal with in the motions to follow?
I think the business following is the big ones.
Okay, thanks very much councillor McLean. Any discussion or debate on the minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries councillor McLean?
Thank you mayor Given, I move council give first reading to bylaw C-1293 minimum property standards bylaw.
Thanks very much councillor McLean, so a motion for first reading, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries councillor McLean?
Thank you mayor Given, I move council give second reading to bylaw C-1293 minimum property standards bylaw.
Thanks very much councillor McLean, open for discussion and debate on second reading councillor Rice?
Be helpful to just outline, I, this is, I believe in response to numerous complaints we've received and sightly premises, so maybe we could have, uh, one of the staff, uh, outline, uh, uh, what changes this is and how it's going to improve our life.
Who could we ask?
Uh.
Mr Manuel?
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Would like to give us just an overview of, uh, generally the provisions of the bylaw and, uh, the situations it's intended to address?
Certainly. So what we're hoping to achieve with the introduction of this bylaw is, um, definitions around what constitutes a nuisance in relation to land, property. Those are their primary concerns, uh. We get a, a lot of complaints, uh, about unsightly properties throughout the year and, uh, at this point, it's been kind of vague as to what a standard in our community has been. So this bylaw closes that gap and, uh, will allow us to refer people to a set of standards which we expect as a community will be met and, uh, enforcement will work with those tenants and homeowners to, uh, gain compliance. Additionally, there's also provisions in there related to, uh, drainage which is, um, a concern from several residents that we get throughout the year and, uh, additionally abandoned houses. There'll now be a provision for us to more quickly either remedy or remove those properties.
Thanks very much, Mr Manuel. Councillor Clayton?
My questions recovered, thank you.
Thank you councillor Rice?
So when you talk about abandoned properties, this could be a house that maybe has had a fire, is boarded up and is sitting, uh, unoccupied for, even though there is a registered owner who pays the taxes on the property, it will be counted as abandoned?
Mr Manuel?
So the way that the, um, bylaw is drafted in that provision has to do with, uh, a home or a property that's usually intended for habitation and basically at the expiration of two years of any appeals that deemed it uninhabitable, so in a fire, there'd be building code issues likely, maybe public health issues that, uh, when required to be remediated. If that doesn't occur, essentially two years from when their appeal period has expired, uh, at that point, the, the city can take action to have the property demolished.
One more question if I?
Councillor Rice?
So, um, does this bylaw allow, um, enforcement services to take action if it is felt that the condition of that property is detrimental to the, uh, joint and neighboring properties?
Mr Manuel?
Yes.
Thank you, councillor Terrence?
Uh, just a question for administration, um, just on the, uh, mowing of, uh, lawns by law, if someone's in violation, they have, you know, 20 centimeters or whatnot, what is the, uh, process from, from there?
So enforcement services on our bylaw complaints tries to follow a three-step process that, uh, as part of a procedure that was established by council. And, uh, that involves typically education, step one, warning, step two, and then step through would be subsequent enforcement action. Using this bylaw, a-again, we're using it more or less for reference to standards. Uh, a mechanism under the municipal government act already exists where the municipality can remediate those properties. So, uh, ultimately, our goal is to achieve compliance versus, uh, prosecution. So if, uh, we weren't having success for, through the first three steps, we would likely just clean it up ourselves and charge it back to the owner.
Councillor Clayton?
Thank you mayor Given. Uh, I just had, uh, two quick questions for administration. One, can you tell me the procedure of the, um, so you go to a house, try to educate them, they're not home, you go there again, try to talk to them, they're not home, you send a letter in the mail and, and it's a rental house and so the tenant doesn't open the mail. Uh, at how long of a period before you realize that the person occupying the home, uh, isn't really coordinating with you or cooperating with you?
So certainly we, uh, through a variety of other bylaws, uh, have that same instance occur quite regularly. We've, uh, developed some techniques that, uh, sometimes are, are more quick, some properties are, are quicker to remediate than others. Persistence, to be quite honest, is, uh, is kind of the key. And oftentimes, uh, it does involve a lot of follow-up from the officers and, uh, some database mining to identify if this is a rental situation, what's gonna be our best way to engage the, um, the property owners and, uh, track them down out of town if we need to. It is something we regularly have to deal with and it is a challenge.
Okay councillor Clayton?
Uh, yes, thank you, and just a quick follow-up, uh, once this bylaw is approved, it goes in effect immediately? So I can warn all the people that don't mow their lawn to get mowing their lawn?
I, I think as Mr Manuel or Mr McIntyre said earlier, it's, uh, after the signatures on the paper, so you?
Thank you.
Usually shows up on my desk the day after council meetings.
Thanks.
Councillor?
That's correct and additionally, we have, uh, our, our first phase here is obviously gonna be the, the public education portion saying that, you know, this is in effect and, uh, now we wanna start working towards gaining, uh, community compliance.
Councillor O'Toole?
Yes, thank you very much mayor Given, just a clarification here, this is strictly for, uh, home, home buildings, residential. This has nothing to do with commercial or industrial type, uh, buildings or that?
So the bylaw as it's drafted today is specific to properties normally intended for human habitation. So typically speaking, that's gonna be a residence. It, uh, it could venture into some commercial properties potentially, but it was intended for residential purposes at this point. That is certainly something as we move forward in the future that, uh, can be amended, but we wanna have the bylaw in place for a period of time and work through the, uh, details in relation to the prosecution enforcement of this bylaw related to residential before we try to tackle anything in the commercial industrial realm. Significantly more difficult.
Thank you very much, just for our TV viewers, that's why I asked.
Councillor Rice?
Oh, you mentioned that, uh, yeah, on occasion, we will go in and remediate the property and particularly under this bylaw, and charge it back to the homeowner. How would we do that? Would we do that through registering it against their tax rule or, or what?
Councillor Rice, that's correct. What we do is, we actually wanna do it through this bylaw. What we would do is use this bylaw as a reference to what our standard was and we do an application through the municipal government act which would allow us then to place it onto the tax rule.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions for administration? Seeing none, uh, and if I remember correctly from way back when, when this all started, we're on second reading. Uh, any, so I'll call for the vote on second reading? Thank you. Motion carries. Look for a motion for third reading?
Thank you mayor.
Councillor McLean, just make sure your, your microphone's on.
Mayor Given, I move that council have third reading of bylaw C-1293 minimum property standards bylaw.
Thanks very much councillor McLean and as I say, whenever this comes up, to have all three readings of a bylaw in the same council meeting, you have to have a motion to enable that to go forward. So to have third and final reading here tonight, this motion would have to pass unanimously, otherwise, uh, the third and final reading would come back at a future council meeting. Any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading here tonight? Seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, so we can have third reading councillor McLean?
Thank you mayor Given. I move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1293 minimum property standards bylaw.
Thanks very much councillor McLean, so motion for third and final reading, last opportunity for any discussion or debate. And I see nobody ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, thanks very much councillor McLean and we have one more item of business from that committee meeting, I believe.
Thank you mayor Given, I move that council approve the revisions to policy 606, snow and ice control.
Thanks very much councillor McLean. Any discussion or debate on the proposed revisions to policy 606, snow and ice control? Councillor Rice?
I guess I have a couple of concerns, you didn't think you were gonna get away that easily, did you Robert? Uh, quite a few complaints last year with us, uh, with the plowing we were doing last year, dumping the snow onto resident sidewalks, uh, and then feeling that that was most unfair, uh, that they would shovel their sidewalk and then we'd come along and dump snow on it. Uh, there was also some misinformation that we're going to find them for not clearing off the snow we dumped on their sidewalk. How does this policy, uh, reflect those concerns?
Thanks, uh, Mr Mayor. Um, the, the way we're gonna be, uh, handling it, uh, this year, uh, last year being, uh, uh, you know, really, uh, severe winter, um, got to the point where, uh, residential areas were, were getting to the point where they're impassable. So, uh, the emergency operation that we did last year to clear out the residential areas did leave some, uh, snow on, uh, sidewalks and such. The way, uh, our, our revised policy will operate will be a more continuous, uh, frequent service. So, uh, we're not gonna get to the point that we were last year where we had, you know, a foot and a half, two feet of snow that we had to remove off the road and really didn't, didn't have anywhere else to put it but, uh, to the sides of the road, thus covering sidewalks and driveways. So our normal operation, uh, we will not be putting snow on sidewalks, uh, we will be leaving snow across the, uh, windrows, across driveways, but, uh, because of the frequency of the service, uh, we expect, uh, those windrows to be minimum. And, uh, during, uh, uh, severe operations, uh, we may have to adjust our procedure somewhat, but, uh, we expect, uh, with, uh, the, uh, the rapid service that we're gonna get this year, that we won't get where we were last year.
So how much does this increase the budget?
Right now, we have about $850,000, uh, uh, for hired equipment and, uh, that's really what we're gonna be using, uh, uh, doing our residential service with this year will be, uh, contracted hired equipment, uh, for a normal winter, uh, that will be enough to, uh, cover the, uh, the operational costs. Uh, but if we get into situations, uh, where we have more severe winters, uh, we do have a winter stabilization fund, uh, and, and some other sources, uh, determined by the director to, uh, uh, fund our, our program if needed.
So at what point or what? Suppose it's an ugly winter, again, like last winter. Your plan is wonderful if, if it's a nice, light snow year. If we get an ugly winter like last winter, how do we, what's the process we would use to cut into that and say, yeah, this isn't working?
The, yeah, one of the, the good things about, uh, this, this program is that, uh, you can add resources if needed. Uh, the way we designed the program to run is, uh, we've got, uh, four teams of, uh, equipment, a team consisting of a grader and a loader, uh, concentrating in each, uh, each residential area per day. Uh, so, uh, if we need to add more resources, it's just a matter of adding another grader, another loader, uh, to handle that. But, uh, because of the, uh, uh, the, the standard for this, uh, uh, program is to, uh, get through our residential areas in two weeks and, uh, I think we've proven it from last winter that we can get through most of residential areas in just five days. So, uh, that compares, uh, to our old system where it took between four and six weeks. Uh, you can just, uh, see how, how much more service people are gonna get, how, how, uh, more often they're gonna see the plows and we won't get into the situation where we were last year where the reason that snow built up so high in some of the neighborhoods is that we hadn't been in those neighborhoods as of yet and we're already a good six weeks into the winter.
So a couple more if I may? Well, uh, there were times last winter when my sidewalk had to be shoveled three times in one day. So how, how is this new system going to work if, if you get a snowfall accumulation like that?
Well, then, then again, you know, reflecting back on, uh, the frequency of the service, uh, our old system, uh, getting through in, in six weeks, our new system getting through in, in 90 to 95% of residential areas in five days, that's where you're gonna see the difference. You're not gonna have the buildup of snow that we had, uh, in previous winters, it's gonna be, uh, controlled, uh, on a more frequent basis and, uh, we won't get the, the foot and a half to two feet. But, you know, we live in the, we live in the north, I mean, we could very well get two feet of snow at, uh, at, in, you know, at one, uh, at one event. How we handle that, you know, we have to, uh, deploy the resources the best we can when we get in this, you know, a serious situation like that. But for the, you know, normal winters and even above normal winters, this system will work. Uh, we have, uh, uh, you know, a contingency plan for, if it's a more severe winter, to call in more resources if required and, uh, modify our system that way.
Two, two more questions from Manuel. Uh, last year, I, it was my understanding that, uh, council was advised, there wasn't any more equipment we could call in. Uh, when, when we were at the height of, of almost disaster, uh, we were told there was no more, so why will that change this year?
We, we've worked over the last couple of years of contractors, that we've got a, a fairly good pool of contractors available to us and, uh, with, uh, a lot of the information that's been going out, uh, about this, this revision to our policy and about, uh, uh, you know, a more consistent hiring of contractors, uh, quite a few have come out, uh, to express interest in working with the city just over the last couple of months. So, uh, I think with, uh, with, uh, another round of, uh, of advertising, uh, some, some new contacts that we've had and, uh, being able to provide, uh, you know, a more continuous service throughout the winter with contractors that, uh, I think not only are service throughout the winter with contractors, that, uh, I think not only our contractors that we have now will, will be more committed to working for the city, but, uh, there'll, there'll be some more people come forward, uh, either purchase new equipment or offer their, their equipment available to the city if we need it.
Okay, I-
Counselor Rice?
I will support the motion, although you need to know, at the first complaint I get about the windrow across the driveway, um, I won't be happy at the next committee meeting.
Counselor Rice, um, any further discussion or debate? Any other questions, comments? I did have one actually on that issue that Counselor Rice raised. Last year, uh, when council approved the change to this snow removal policy, or, or sorry, the temporary measures, uh, administration implemented a system that would allow, uh, those who are physically unable, uh, to remove snow from their driveways to register, um, to receive, uh, some, uh, special service. Is administration, with this policy changes, administration proposing to do the same again this year? And if so, how early, um, does it men see, um, residents being able to get themselves on that list if needed?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Um, we're working on a, a program right now, uh, just, uh, running it through our legislative services, uh, people to, uh, make sure that, uh, it's, it's meeting all their requirements, and, uh, we hope to have something, you know, very shortly on that, uh, to be available to residents and, uh, a clear application process so that if you are unable for whatever reason to clear the windrow, be it a disability or, or age or, or, uh, or whatever, we're still establishing that criteria and it will be available shortly.
So does, do you see, Robert, that coming forward before the end of summer, um, so that there's time to promote it in advance of the winter season?
Yes, for sure. I would say by, by September one, we'll have the system in place.
Thank you very much. Counselor Rice?
I'm strange, but I actually find it easier to drive when there's a skiff of snow on the road than when you take it right down to the pavement. I find that makes it get awfully slick. Um, I don't know if other people have the same experience, but, uh, is this policy proposed to take it right down to the pavement or to leave that little bit of crunchy snow on the road? Not, not enough to make those ruts where you think that you're never getting out of them, but, uh-
Yes, uh, for various reasons, there'll be, there'll be, uh, um, a bit of snowpack left on the road, uh, for, for what you say, because we don't want to take it right down to the asphalt because, uh, you can get into some situations with, uh, freeze thaw cycles and ice forming. So we, we want to maintain, uh, a small amount of compact on the road for, uh, traction purposes.
And this is my last one, I promise. So you, you can really, really, really assure me that the new system will make sure that we don't have those kind of ruts where, as you're driving in the ruts and there's cars parked on both sides of the road, you, you lose fifteen pounds on your way home from work just sweating, going, oh God, oh God, but you're, that's not going to happen.
Mr. Carroll?
Thank you. Um, guarantee, uh, you know, certainly where you get those areas where it's, it's rutted, it's probably because we couldn't get into the area to service it because of the parked vehicles. Um, part of the, uh, this, this revised, uh, procedure, uh, will be a more, will be a scheduled snow removal in your neighborhood. So you'll know that, that the day before your garbage day is, is the day that we're going to be in your neighborhood clearing snow. So, um, by scheduling a day and, uh, getting the word out and, uh, using all the tools we have to inform people that we're going to be removing snow, we hope to get those vehicles off the road.
We'll be working more diligently with, uh, enforcement services. Like I, I guess it's real irritating, if I got a neighbor that's a jerk, I don't want to, why should I be punished for that? But I got a neighbor that's a jerk and I don't give my street plowed and it's no fault of mine. So, tell him.
Mr. Carroll?
Uh, we're, we work with enforcement services quite closely during our, uh, our, our residential operation and, uh, and we have, you know, door knockers that go ahead of our crews also are removing vehicles. So, uh, getting a hundred percent of the vehicles off the road is, is a lofty goal. And I don't know if we'll, we'll ever get there, but, uh, you know, there's always, uh, a, a vehicle left behind and, and enforcement services will do what they, they can do to get that vehicle moved. And, uh, we had, uh, you know, great luck last winter, uh, with, uh, the help we had from enforcement services moving vehicles, and we're, we're able to get in and plow areas that we've never been able to get in before. So, uh, the, uh, the, the public notification, the scheduling is, will, will certainly go a long way to, uh, getting those vehicles off the road in the future.
Counselor Rice, I do see some others in the queue with questions or comments, so I'm going to move on. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just wanted to say that, um, one of the big concerns that I had last year in regards to sidewalks, especially in school areas where people, uh, young people were walking to schools, um, I see it's addressed here, but I'm just, I'm wondering if there's, is that going to be in where it talks about, uh, you know, un-easements and that type of thing, or where does it address specifically the school walking areas?
Mr. Carroll?
Uh, school zones are, for the most part, the responsibility of the schools themselves as far as clearing the snow off the sidewalks, um, uh, and, and most of the schools are in, uh, are on priority two roads. So, uh, we, we normally plow the snow to the middle of those roads and windrow it and haul it away. So it's rare that the snow will go from the road onto the sidewalk, uh, through school zones, and, and if, and if it is, or if there is an accumulation of snow on sidewalks, it's, uh, the school board's responsibility, uh, to remove that.
Counselor Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. Uh, actually, I got a couple of questions here for administration. Uh, Robert, uh, I just want to kind of piggyback off of what, uh, Counselor Clayton said there. Uh, I noticed in the policy, uh, which I think is great, by the way, so don't worry, I'm not pooping on it, uh, but when you're plowing, when you're plowing the streets, uh, and you're leaving a windrow in the driveway, um, where's the other snow going if it's, if you're going to have a windrow on the driveway? Like, wouldn't that mean that you'd have a windrow on the sidewalk too, at least? It's an accumulation of snow that you scraped up off the street or?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, the, the way the operation will go is that the snow will be pushed past the sidewalks, if the sidewalk is, is a, a monolithic type sidewalk where it's actually connected to the curb. So, uh, our, uh, operators will be instructed to push the side, push the snow past the sidewalk, still be windrow on the other side of the sidewalk, and in some areas, there's a, enough boulevard between the curb and the sidewalk to, to store it there also. And then, uh, you know, some of the older areas are down to me, there's, the, the roads are wide enough to leave the windrow of snow, uh, basically on the road, uh, to remove later. So, uh, there's several options available to us. Um, as far as getting the, the snow, uh, leaving the snow in driveways, I mean, you can push it back further, but the windrow's still going to be there across the driveway. So it saves us the task of, uh, picking that snow up in driveways and, and, uh, you know, moving it and storing it somewhere else, which was a hu- huge, uh, uh, commitment of time from our operators and really slowed down the, uh, the operation considerably.
Um, if I may, I actually got another question added on. Uh, now, if we're just going to push it onto, I guess, past the sidewalk, um, you live on a street with houses on each side, there's no boulevard, you're pushing it up onto a residential owner's property, um, how are we going to address damages or is it just going to be standard fair for what we've done, just accept claims as they come in or?
Mr. Carroll?
For the most part, uh, when we, when we do push it past the sidewalk, we still own considerable right of way. Uh, the city owns, uh, minimum ten, sometimes fifteen feet, uh, of, of boulevard from the curb. So there's, uh, you know, people, you know, are under the false assumption that we're putting snow onto their property, but it really still, still is city-owned property. And, uh, there is, uh, you know, we, we know the, the widths of right of way, we know there's the property that the city owns, so we, we have a pretty good idea, you know, how much snow we can store and how far we can put it back.
Okay, thanks for that answer, and, uh, if I may, just, uh, one final. Um, one of my concerns last year was, was also aligned with Counselor Clayton's, and I think we've addressed the mobility issue, but I, I'm thinking about cul-de-sacs too, and I noticed that there's not much of a change between this snow policy of removal and, uh, our old, uh, snow policy removal system, um, or snow removal policy system. My, driving through different neighborhoods, especially in cul-de-sacs, and especially with the, the building up of like snow mountains, like right in the middle of the circle of where everyone's backing out, I found that as it, uh, the snow melted and froze again, melted and froze again, you got his pooling of slush that later turned into huge ruts, later turned into icing issues that crept onto people's own walkway, onto their driveways, making a safety issue for that. I guess, uh, despite the fact that I love the, the snow removal policy as presented, um, I do have, uh, a concern about not removing, like, those mountains or at least cutting them down in size so that we don't have to deal with the issues or the residents there that don't have to deal with those issues. Is there anything that we could possibly do, like, to address this situation and maybe as the complaints roll in or just, uh, forward thinking?
Mr. Carroll?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, you're right, uh, the, the, our removal procedure in cul-de-sacs, uh, will remain pretty much as it was where most of the snow was piled up into the center. Um, the fact that it's going to be a more frequent service now, uh, we won't get that buildup that we've, we've experienced in previous winters where, you know, the, the, the fact that we weren't in plowing the snow allowed the snow to build up considerably, and then, uh, uh, you, you, that's when you get the rutting, especially if you've got to build up the snow and you get a, a freeze thaw cycle of some sort. Uh, the fact that we're going to be able to get through the residential areas, uh, areas frequently, we hope to, uh, minimize that amount of buildup. Uh, you're still going to have the pile of snow in the middle of the cul-de-sac, and when that melts, uh, you're still going to have the issues that, uh, that come with that. But, um, the travel way, the area, the area around that, that bald, uh, that accesses the driveway should be clear and, uh, and rut-free with this new system.
Anything further?
Uh, fair enough. Thank you very much for your answers, Robert.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion or debate? I don't see anybody in the queue, so I will call for the vote. Excuse me. Uh, sorry, we'll have a revote there. We'll start the votes. Should be there for you now, counsel. Thank you, and that motion carries unanimously. Counselor McLean, uh, anything to finalize from the meeting?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I, I, uh, I know it's on everybody's mind, the City Grand Prairie Policy six oh six right now and all the reporters and everybody here, but actually, I want to say thank you for the direction of council tonight as Chair of Community Safety. Thank you to the hard work of staff of looking into this revision, and as well, the great input of the employees that, uh, thought input that know their job very well. So, uh, it's one of my proudest moments being a counselor.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Uh, and I think that would take us to nine point nine, the Corporate Services Committee meeting, and, uh, Counselor Ter, oh, sorry, uh, Counselor O'Toole, I think you'll handle that one for us, since Counselor Logan isn't here.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move the council receive the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee mail, uh, meeting held June twenty-fourth, twenty fourteen.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and I think you have some business arising.
I've got, uh, nine point nine point one, the borrowing bylaw C dash one three oh eight, and lending bylaw C dash thirteen oh nine, the Grand Prairie Airport, uh, runway expansion and rehabilitation. And I am moving the council give first reading to the borrowing bylaw C dash thirteen oh eight as presented.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. So, uh, first, first reading of this borrowing bylaw, uh, there's no discussion or debate on first reading, and subsequent readings will come back to a future council meeting. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, Counselor O'Toole.
And the second one tonight is, uh, I move council give first reading to the lending bylaw C dash thirteen oh nine as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Again, as with, uh, previous, uh, no discussion or debate on first reading, and then future readings will come back to a subsequent council meeting. I'll call for the vote on first reading. Thank you. That motion carries. Uh, Counselor O'Toole, anything you want to highlight in that set of minutes?
Uh, just the discussion regarding the, uh, borrowing bylaws, major item of the day.
Thanks very much. I believe that handles all of our committee business. Um, we had no items of correspondence, and we had no public delegations in the delegation portion of the agenda. We have no notices of motion, and that takes us to council member reports. And we start up at the top of the list with A, and under A, the Alberta Urban Municipalities Association. Counselor Rice?
Attended the president's symposium, uh, in terms of, uh, getting feedback for, uh, preferred position for amendments to the Municipal Government Act where his worship was one of the panelists and, uh, and an excellent job, uh, that he did, and, uh, really appreciate his participation. I will be meeting on Thursday with the Minister of Municipal Affairs, who seems eager to move the revisions forward. So that's kind of an exciting victory. We'll also be taping a segment of primetime TV show on the subject of pensions, and of course, um, you know, the whole subject of pensions vitally important to municipality, so we'll be talking about that.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Uh, we've, we've moved to the Disabled Transportation Society, Counselor O'Toole.
Yes, just a short briefing, Mayor Given. Uh, we did have an AGM, uh, at this, or sorry, not an AGM, our, um, financial, um, meeting regarding financials for the next, uh, few years, and, uh, I can tell you that the Disabled Transport Society is growing considerably. The amount of, uh, people that we pick up on a daily, regular, weekly basis is growing substantial, and I am probably going to let you in that they'll be requesting, uh, some more buses and some more financial help over the next, uh, six months or so.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Um, and did you also want to do Grand Prairie Airport Commission?
Yes, uh, Grand Prairie Airport Commission, I had a meeting here last week, and, uh, topic of discussion was basically, uh, what's going on in, in the airport over the last year. We had an AGM there and, uh, some of the, we are also growing at a pretty good rate, and, uh, there's, uh, concerns of, uh, financial, uh, support from the federal government, and in the future, if our growth rate continues, we will be losing any, uh, federal funding in the future. Uh, we have surpassed the minimum standard for a one fire truck, uh, airport, and we have, uh, purchased or going to purchase a second fire truck and the facility to host that, uh, fire truck in the Grand Prairie Airport. So traffic volumes are up. And, uh, another item that, uh, was brought up, uh, the hundredth anniversary committee had a number of, um, requests in regards to naming, uh, parks, and, uh, was slow to start, but towards the end, it really picked up. And, uh, thanks to many of the patrons of the city, uh, residents, um, there's been a, a huge request for a number of people that have had influence at the airport, whether original landowners, pilots, commercial pilots, private pilots, uh, just regarding the airport. So a request was made that maybe we could put some of those parks that we were going to use, uh, and keep them in the city, but anything to do with the airport, whether it's a pilot or, uh, somebody like that, uh, owner of an airline corporation, uh, maybe make room at the airport to name possibly streets, uh, or something like that, uh, out at the airport. So, uh, it's still in the works, but the request has been made, and I can tell you that, uh, we're going to look at this quite seriously. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. And, uh, P. Searshad Zone, Counselor McLean, I think you're up next, if you want to turn your microphone on.
Thank you, Mayor Given, and I look forward to, I was at the meeting, because the last one, we were at FCM, and I missed the meeting, so, um, a few things came up about the meeting. The city asked for a appointment to be on the Education Committee. As I said on PASA, they appointed me to be on the Education Committee, but it sounds like the Environment Committee, we will, I don't know, be Michelle Gardner or somebody that was passed to be sitting on that committee, because we're looking at ideas of, uh, getting the message out there, if it be on the, the webpage of the city or on, on different areas and different municipalities, it stretches a few municipalities. And, and why I'm a little bit excited to be on PASA, I got a lot to learn, because technology talk on there, there's a lot of it I don't understand, because I just remember being a youth in, uh, in the, in the eighties and when Chernobyl happened, and we had certain much radiation over here from the air. So, yeah, it's very important. Some of the concerns they brought up, um, there, there's a Mera starting out, uh, it's more of a centralized area in, in Alberta, the naming of it, and there's concern about, PASA's doing really good in our region, and, uh, will they grow or will they stay the same in their boundaries? Those are look, being looked at, and how a Mera's going to affect, we know in our healthcare and, uh, education, how centralization hasn't worked in a lot of ways and actually hurt regions, so- so, a lot of concerns about that. Um, they're having a stakeholders forum in Sherwood Park in October, September, and for board members to go to, and, uh, I have a lot to learn, uh, in Paza, and, uh, I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean, uh, and I think the last report we had was from Counselor Terrent and the South Peace Regional Archives Society. Counselor Terrent?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So one of the items we talked about at the meeting was, uh, the business planning, and, um, the Archives was actually very appreciative of the, of, um, the city's new rules in regards to community funding. Um, it gave them a little bit more, uh, made them think a little bit, uh, harder in, in some respects, and to help them with their long-term planning, so they were very appreciative of the, the new reporting, um, that's coming out of that. Um, there's also further discussion on the new, on a new Archives building, and there was just a real strong confirmation in their, in the, on the board that, uh, the Montrose site was, uh, a, an ideal site for them. Um, there was, and, uh, more notable, notably for me, there was, uh, there was a lot of support from surrounding municipalities, so from the county, Saddle Hills County and the MD of Greenview, they all, um, confirmed their support that the Montrose site would be, uh, great for a, a regional facility. And, uh, yeah, with that, that was, that was the two big items of the meeting.
Great, thanks very much, Counselor Terrent. And Counselor Terrent, since we, uh, finished off with you with, uh, reports from agencies, boards, and commissions, do you wanna start with Council Roundtable?
Perfect, yes. So on the nineteenth, I attended the, the Youth Council, they had their year-end dinner, so it was great to have, uh, a dialogue with, with the youth there and try and, and hear some of their priorities, and, uh, it was, uh, a great discussion, and, uh, they have great, uh, perspectives. On, um, let's see, on the twenty-fifth, I got to attend my first, uh, citizenship ceremony, and I bring greetings on behalf of, uh, the mayor and council, and it was great to see, uh, so many people in our community and surrounding communities becoming Canadian citizens, and, and seeing the, the vibrancy that they bring to the city. Uh, and on, missing one here. Oh, uh, the city and county had, uh, we had a joint Recreation Board meeting, and I think it was a productive meeting in, in, uh, that we're moving forward with, uh, going ahead with a joint, um, a joint recreation plan, master plan, and I think that's gonna be, uh, positive for the region, and, uh, a, a great initiative showing that, uh, the city and county can work together.
Thanks, Counselor Terrent. Uh, Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, and I also attended the meeting, uh, with, uh, some fellow councillors regarding city and county Joint Recreation Committee, and I look forward to seeing, uh, the inventory report as well as, uh, uh, the plan going forward. Um, I also attended a meeting, um, a Pursuit of Excellence meeting, uh, that was a great opportunity to once again, uh, uh, share some money to our coaches and, and athletes, uh, and develop, uh, you know, uh, opportunities within the region, and, and send people to, uh, um, tournaments and national competitions, uh, actually around the world this time. Um, I also set, uh, was, had an opportunity to meet with the urban development, uh, it's, uh, the local developers in regards to riparian, riparian setbacks, uh, that was a great discussion, and I, uh, learnt a lot at that. As well, I attended, um, the Canadian Tire, um, Chamber Golf Tournament. It, as always, was sold out, and was hosted at Bear Creek Golf Course this year, which was, uh, um, a great, uh, facility, one of our local many golf facilities. Um, and amongst a few other things, uh, it was a busy couple of weeks, so, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Uh, I attended twenty-three events or meetings related to city purposes, uh, this last couple of weeks, and I just wanna highlight two events, both, uh, youth engagement. Uh, I attended the graduation of the Tobanau students. Uh, these are children that have, uh, learning, uh, difficulties in a traditional setting, and, uh, for one reason or another, they've, um, moved into a situation where, uh, they can be educated, uh, maybe at a different rate than the other students in other, uh, uh, school districts. Uh, the Volunteer Services Bureau, they had a, uh, certification program, uh, graduation. It's the first in Al- uh, first in Grand Prairie, and, uh, it's a program where, uh, volunteers that, uh, have not had a lot of experience, uh, that want to become certified. So, example, uh, in order to work in food, there's a Food Safe course that they can take. If they wanna work in maybe industry or industry, there's, uh, WIMSS and, uh, other courses that are put on like that. And, uh, I can tell you that I think there was seventeen graduates, started off with twenty, and, uh, it was remarkable. I asked, uh, what they liked about it most is the, the educators and the presenters, and, uh, just having that, uh, knowing that they're going out, and actually having the ability to know something when they get to a task. And, uh, it was a great, great attitude in the room, and, uh, I can tell you that, uh, the Volunteer Services Board themselves were quite pleased that council said, "No, we don't want you to just do this, we want you to do more." And we pushed them to the limit to get the students to get very well-trained and very diverse. So, uh, I guess hats off to us in making this happen, and hats off to Volunteer Services Board for making it happen. So, thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Rice? Just have to get your microphone.
Certainly, as, as Counselor O'Toole mentioned, there was twenty-eight events. Um, uh, I don't ever recall a time in council's history that has been as busy as we have been with, uh, meetings, let alone, uh, the number of events happening, so, uh, all to say, we've all been busy, and I found it a very productive, exciting, and exhausting time.
Thanks, Counselor Rice. Counselor Thiessen?
I, uh, I don't know, I haven't been in the game as long as you have, uh, uh, Counselor Rice, but, uh, I have found it very, uh, exhausting as well. It's been, uh, quite a busy couple of weeks. Uh, I myself have attended, uh, twenty-six different events, and, uh, they just keep piling in. I don't know when they, they stop, uh, it's event on top of event on top of event. Uh, there is a couple of things that I would like to highlight of things that I did participate in. Uh, one in particular would be, uh, this the solstice weekend with Aboriginal Days, National Aboriginal Days. I was part of the, uh, Head Start graduation ceremony, so I got to see the little preschoolers graduate, which is quite cute. I attended that with, uh, Counselor Radburn. Uh, I was also there for the pancake breakfast on the, the morning after on the Saturday on the actual solstice. Had to take some time off, uh, on the twenty-second, because a very special, uh, community-engaging event I was, uh, honored to take part in, it was, uh, the Faith in Action event, uh, which was, uh, quite amazing, where you saw, we saw, oh, Bill, you were there, there's four different churches, and even, uh, church group from the United States, even more. Uh, at least four that I have the names of, uh, I don't know if I'm allowed to announce the names, I can. All right, uh, so we'll go into the, oh, here. Uh, Ivy Lake Baptist Church was there, uh, West One Community Church, North Country Community Church. Um, that's all I got on my list here as far as, but there was many, many, and we're talking over, well over a hundred people to clean up the neighborhoods in the hillside residential area, so I spent, uh, most of the day pushing a lawnmower. Uh, I actually broke at somebody's lawnmower, I broke somebody's weed whacker, they, they said, "We're gonna stop giving you equipment if you keep breaking it." I said, "That's all right, as long as we're getting all this stuff done." It made me feel very proud to be part of a, a community-inspired event that actually came from, uh, leaders within the church community, so, uh, I was very honored to, uh, help out with that event, and, uh, kudos to the organizers and all the people involved, including the people from the United States who were digging up dead trees around the Odyssey House. I saw later on in the week after, I did the citizenship ceremony as well, so lots of good things happening in Grand Prairie. Uh, that was definitely the highlight of, uh, my last two weeks.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, as I, uh, said already through reports, uh, Paza, I went to on June twenty-sixth, but the other one I wanna speak to was the President Summit. I attended as well, uh, with Mayor Bill Given. I was there for three days, June seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth, and I just wanna say hats off to, uh, the President of AUMA, Helen Rice. Counselor Rice, uh, she is a strong advocate for, um, cities, towns, and being the President of AUMA right now is very important in how the direction's gonna go. Um, some of the things I learned there and talked to other councillors and mayors was, there's a strong emphasis of change and don't stay status quo. And the government in power has been status quo for years. This is not me saying this, this is Nenshi, Mayor of Calgary was there, and he was quite direct, and I was surprised. And, uh, they have a list, AUMA, if you go on their website, list of fundamental changes. I'm just gonna, they have ten main ones, but I'm gonna just say three that I think are all important, uh, Counselor Rice. So, uh, the three that I think is recognize municipalities as an order of government, uh, provide municipalities with the power and authority required to fill their responsibilities, and the other one I think is huge is, uh, to facilitate, uh, regional cooperation, intermunicipal revenue cost sharing, including a framework for intermunicipal dispute resolutions, to actually get involved and not be status quo. So, once again, thank you, Helen, and I'm glad you're the President of AUMA.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. I think we're all glad Counselor Rice is President of AUMA, certainly would agree with that. Um, I'll try to be brief and just, uh, highlight a couple of events that, uh, a few events that I attended. On the seventeenth, I had the, uh, pleasure of attend, taking a tour of the new Grand Prairie Regional Hospital. I certainly appreciated the opportunity to get up close and personal with the building, um, and I think the public will be surprised by how large the site is. I don't think you really get a sense of the scale of the project until you're, uh, at the foot of it, um, but it does look like, uh, construction is progressing on target and on schedule, uh, certainly appreciate seeing that happening for our community. Um, later that day, I had an opportunity to have, uh, a luncheon and roundtable with Associate Minister Theresa Woopah. Uh, she is Associate Minister of Intergovernmental and International Relations, um, and she was here to talk about Alberta's Asian Strategy. Uh, the next day, I was in Edmonton, Calgary, for the AUMA President Summit, as was noted by Counselor Rice. Certainly appreciated the invitation to speak as a part of the panel, um, and, uh, noted the power of President Rice when there was a, a speaker from the Edmonton Journal, the editor of the Edmonton Journal's City section, uh, asked if she could make a presentation to the, to the Congress, and Counselor Rice said, "Well, if you can get here, you can be on a panel," and I think that made a pretty significant impression on the, uh, on the editor of the Edmonton Journal. So, kudos, Counselor Rice, for that. Um, uh, later on in the week, I had the opportunity to fall off a cow, um, all in, all in the name of good fun and, uh, recognition of some of our good community groups. I was riding or falling, depending on how you look at it, uh, for, um, um, for the Kool-Aid Society, um, but a lot of the other participants had picked their favorite, um, organizations to represent as well, and certainly appreciated the opportunity, uh, that was given for that by the Palmeroy Guitars and Waggons Weekend. Um, I also participated in the, uh, National Aboriginal Day Pancake Breakfast at the Grand Prairie Friendship Center, um, also brought greetings to the, to the Alberta Gardening and Horticultural Association, um, at Theresa Sergeant Hall that Saturday, and then on the Sunday morning, I was with Counselor Thiessen at the Kickoff to the Faith in Action Event. Um, this is the second time the event has happened. Um, great to see so many church groups choosing to dedicate their Sunday morning, uh, to improving, uh, an area of our city, um, and asking nothing in return. Uh, I remember the video from last year that they actually did, and, uh, I think it makes a significant impression on, on that neighborhood, and that's the type of lasting impact I think we should all aspire to make in our community. Uh, later on that day, I also participated in the National Aboriginal Day Ceremony down at Musquessee Park, and, um, middle of this week, on Wednesday, I was in Calgary again, uh, to attend a, a board meeting of Alert, the Alberta Law Enforcement Response Teams, uh, as the organization finalizes its, uh, annual report, which will be coming around to municipalities and, and the general public in the next couple of weeks. Um, the amount of work that Alert has done in Alberta communities over the past, uh, six, seven years that it's been existence is truly staggering, uh, and, um, I'm pleased to see that the annual report is in a very easily digestible sort of format, uh, very public-friendly, and council members would see that when it comes across. Um, it also breaks out by region, um, some of the successes, and so we'll see, uh, specifically the amount of dollars, uh, in drugs seized in the Grand Prairie region, firearms seized in the Grand Prairie region, um, and all other areas, uh, that Alert works in, uh, broken out by region and, uh, service area, and, um, it's interesting to note that some of the largest, most significant busts that the organization has made in the Grand Prairie region have not actually been in Grand Prairie. Uh, they've been in Wembley, they've been in Vahalla, uh, they've been in Tepe Creek, um, just goes to show that crime ultimately knows no boundaries. Um, and, uh, with that, I believe, uh, that's all the items that I want to report on. I would say to everybody, good night and happy Canada Day tomorrow. Bye.